To go ahead and get started, this is March 21st, 2013 Canton City Council. And if you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this wonderful crowd that's here tonight. We ask that you be with each one here and help us make the right decisions for our city. All these things we pray in your name.
I welcome everyone here tonight. It's a special occasion tonight. We have a special opportunity to begin a process that we have talked about for some time. And we have the members of the Commission on Canton's Future here. And what we want to do to start with is just ask each council member to introduce his or her members and to maybe tell a little bit about them. And then we will have the swearing in. I'll begin. I have three appointees, Dennis Burnett, back here. If you would, come on up front and we'll get this, stand over this way. It's a pretty good sized group.
You said I could stand on the back row?
I did. I did. I prefer to do them all when they get up here. One photo, group photo, we can have two. Bill Grant is in Chicago, so he was not able to make it tonight. Nell McRuever, Dennis is President of Cherokee Bank. Nell is a housewife and historic buff and obviously an expert in many historic items. So we appreciate, not that you're old, you know, not that. But you certainly bring a lot to the table in this committee, I think. Mr. Beresford, would you introduce those that you have?
Yes, thank you. Clay Cowie is a fireman for Woodstock.
Go ahead.
Been a resident here in Canton for a long time. And we have Jennifer White. She is a home acre. She has been also a resident here in Canton. She actually did work for the city of Canton at one time. And we appreciate her. And I want to see Tim. Yep, Tim, please. Tim McCree, also a resident of Canton.
Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Odie Gold. Odie's a lifetime resident of Canton. I don't know how many generations his family goes back. He lives just right across from City Hall here.
Five.
I thought he was sick, but anyway. Five generations and longtime friend of mine, a very passionate and involved member of our Canton community. Ben Key, also a lifetime member, resident of Canton, Cherokee County. I've recently only met Ben and ironically, we were on the opposite sides of an issue. There's some issues we don't agree on, but Ben is very, very concerned about the future of our city. And I think he has a great future here. He'll make a great member. And last but not least, Jorie Mullins. Jorie's the love of my life. She's a native of Rome, has worked in the Rome County Government for a number of years, and she's now a resident of Canton.
Thank you, Nell. Let's see. Mr. Hubbard.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have three, and all three have lived in Canton at one time or another and are presently, of course, living here now. But I'd like to first introduce Candace Walker Bunda. And Candace grew up here in the area, went to Cherokee High School, was all-star in several sports. And she went off to school and lived in Savannah and I believe a brief stay in New York. And now she's decided to come back home and she's got a new design studio with her husband above a sound playoffs business downtown. Another gentleman that I've enjoyed getting to know the past couple of years is Bill Henry. Lives out in the Laurel Canyon area, again, has deep roots into the county of the city. And he also has lived elsewhere, which I hope brings a lot to the table like Candace. And then another gentleman that I'm sure a lot of people know is Ned Castleberry, who's been here in the city for quite some time. And also has lived elsewhere that will bring a lot to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if all my appointees are here because we didn't get to contact them until the last minute, but Jose Ayaya, he's not here. And Rodney Stevenson, Jr., he's not here. And George Connor. I guess nobody made it.
Okay. Mr. Edmond?
Andy Alexander, who has been a resident for a whole period of time here, who attends all of our meetings and is always kind of word of wisdom to give forward. We also have Ken Roberts, who lives close by and attends many of our meetings, and we appreciate him and his input. And also someone new, Clint Weddely, who has a business up in Jasper. He lives in the Great Sky Community and I'm very glad to have him on board.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Cummins?
Yes, first one is Ms. Jennifer Dunn. Ms. Dunn is a resident of the Oakdale section of the city. Her family has long roots in Cherokee County and the Canton area, having been here for many generations. She's an accomplished, award-winning writer. She is currently the owner of a social media marketing internet company with national and international clients. As well as that, she is active in the Cherokee Arts Council. She was instrumental in the development of the monthly Thursday morning breakfast meetings for the Main Street merchants. It's my belief that her skills and her youthful viewpoint will be invaluable to this group. My second appointee is Corey Wilson. Mr. Wilson resides in the historic section of downtown Canton. He is employed as an officer of the North Georgia Bank. He's an organized problem solver. He brings a significant skill set to this group. I have personally witnessed his abilities as a meeting facilitator and realize how important this will be for the success of such a large committee. A young man with a passion for maintaining Canton's historic heritage while moving the city forward is my greatest confidence. Mr. John Rust is a resident of River Green subdivision. He has lived in Canton for nine years, now retired. He was an executive recruiter and also has a law degree. Through his years here, he has always been willing to serve his community and the city in any requested way. City committees on which he has served include the City Charter Study and the Unified Code Committee. He is currently president of the River Green Homeowners Advisory Board and has, has in the past, organized the annual River Green Run for charity and has even served as the Easter Bunny. I believe he will be a superb assistance to this committee.
Camille, can you, you want to arrange them so we can get a photograph?
Do you have to have the whole folks in the back? Can we do two rows?
They have to get more than one row there.
It's amazing.
Keep, keep, I just want to say a few words there. First of all, I want to say thank you very much for your service. I think this is a great group. The selections have been, I couldn't ask for a better selection of folks to do what I perceive, and I'm sure the council as well perceives, needs to be done. Your goal, of course, as you know, is to develop a vision for the city of Canton. And that's, that's sort of a broad goal, I know. And yet, hopefully, you can look at it very long-term and short-term. I hope you will look at it in an unrestricted way so that, you know, you can dream big, you know, regardless, just as if money wasn't a problem. What would you like to see? But we all know that it is, so we got to come back down to reality and say, well, we got to restrict it a little bit. What really, in reality, what can we do and over what period of time? What do we want our city to become? I anticipate that you will need to get tons of input. Public hearings, a lot of brainstorming among yourselves and others, certainly. You know, this, this project is not a government, some higher government requirement. We don't have to do this. We do it because we want to do it, and I think because it's important to our city. It benefits not only the residents today, but future generations, I think. This is an extremely serious and important commission. It cannot be taken lightly, nor should individual preferences or desires take precedence. What we wish our city to become must be a collage of ideas filtered and shaped to meet the desires of our community. We don't have to be like any other city or any other community. We should just be what we, as Cantonians, want our community to be and become. I would suggest that you not get bogged down in details and too many specifics. The outcome of this commission should be a general guide designed to bring into focus a vision of Canton's future. The governing body of this city hopefully will utilize this document as a pathway in making decisions on behalf of its citizens and for the city. It will help this council and future councils stay on track. I would further suggest that this commission look at setting a vision for both short and long-term goals, as I indicated. I think that's very important, five years, maybe all the way up to 2050. But, you know, it's really about a dream for this city is what it's about. But it's something, we have to take that dream and we have to put it down on paper. Some of the general categories you may wish to discuss, I think, would include transportation, economic development, public utilities and infrastructure, government administration, parks and rent, land use and development, emergency services, historical preservation, and others that I am sure you will come up with along the way. Your thoughts and those of the citizens of Canton about these and other areas may help you shape, may help you shape the future of Canton. Your efforts must be comprehensive and include all areas that your city government deals with. The future commission must be an ongoing process. Whenever you produce a document, it will not be final. As times change, people and desires change, so will the vision for Canton. I hope this commission will be available well into the future to meet the needs of a changing vision. This commission is to be independent in its operation. I'm asking our city manager to provide staff assistance to the commission as requested. The staff will not manage nor direct this commission, but will be available to answer questions and provide data and materials as requested by the commission. You will set your own schedule, but will keep the council informed on your activities and progress on a frequent basis. This is not a short-term effort. This body is not to be directed by the mayor or council or city staff. I am sure as time goes by, funds will be requested by the commission for special needs and assistance. You have the ability to seek assistance from other professional organizations, other governments or individuals. I believe that I can speak for this council and say that this council supports your efforts, both financially and morally. Congratulations and thank you very much. We have, I want to have a long swearing in here, I guess. Okay. I want everyone to raise their right hand. We're going to do this as official, okay? I, and state your name.
I.
Do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties required of me as a member of the Commission on Canton's Future.
The duties required of me as a member of the Commission on Canton's Future.
I will attend and participate in the meetings.
I will attend and participate in the meetings.
I will listen to and respect the opinion of other members.
I will listen to and respect the opinion of other members.
Of the commission.
Of the commission.
And to all citizens who may participate in the process.
And to all citizens who may participate in the process.
I recognize the need for all meetings to be open to the public and media.
I recognize the need for all meetings to be open to the public and media.
I will work cooperatively with other members of the commission.
I will work cooperatively with other members of the commission.
To seek a vision for the city of Canton.
To seek a vision for the city of Canton.
Which is in the best interest of all our, all citizens of our city.
Which is in the best interest of all citizens of our city.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. I have a few questions on the budget amendment. 7B? 7B, under the consent agenda, and put it under Old Business. And item 9C says, action. We've never had it under any discussion in a work session. I'd like that to be used for discussion only. Which one is that now? 9C, under New Business. 9C, okay. You want that under what? I just want it to be considered for discussion. There's never, involves quite a bit of money and it's never been discussed. Okay. Any others?
I would say 9C is Mr. Beresford's action, so I think he should be consulted.
Probably so. Is this one you need, you're asking for action on tonight?
Yes, sir. We are working under time constraint. It's, will we discuss the matter, Don?
You say you're under time constraint. Well, okay, well, we have a, we have, I guess, a motion to, to leave the agenda to do that. I mean, we can vote against it or for it. You know, I'm probably going to be outvoted on the action item anyway, but our standard procedure of anything of this significance, money, has always been that it's been on a work session first, and then it goes to a voting session. And we've never had this particular item discussed at a work session, and I'm just trying to adhere to what our standard operating procedures here before have been. And, you know, that's all I'm asking for. Any others?
Mr. Mayor, I would like, with the council's permission, to be allowed to make, make a brief statement right after we approve the amendments and right before the public input.
Okay.
I also have a question. What if we want to make some of these changes and don't want to make others? Should we vote? Should we vote separately?
I, that's, my guess is that's what we're going to need to do. Okay. Any other changes that are anticipated or requested in the agenda? Okay. I believe the first request was to remove the item seven B. I think we need to do that anyway, at the request of any council member. It needs to be pulled off and put under old business. It will still be discussed, but if someone has a question, we normally pull that off. The other, so I don't even think there's a vote required on that one, but on the item nine C, uh, what's that? Nine C, the action on the resolution of Hedewah River Trail Plan, Mr. Cummins had suggested that we have not, not action, replace the word action, I guess, with discussion at this point.
Well, I'd be more than happy to have a discussion, but I want to be able to have that discussion.
You want, you want to have a discussion?
I have a discussion, and I'm going to ask a fraction. This thing's been on the docket for ten years.
I think that is, yeah, I'd say, well, well.
It's not like...
Is that really a matter for the agenda? That's just asking not to do a motion at the time of the call.
Okay.
Is it really an agenda matter?
No, it's...
I understand your point, but that, that could be discussed at the time.
Yeah, discussed. Okay. All right, well, we'll get to that. The only other item would be to amend the agenda to allow Mr. Bryan to, to speak briefly just prior to the public input, is that right?
Yes, sir. Item five C.
Five C. Okay, all right.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, only one comment. There's nothing that wouldn't stop Mr. Bear from making an action. I want to bring this point out, that under our operating procedures, he's allowed to declare this an emergency and have it voted whether or not action should be taken tonight. It's just that our normal procedures tick and don't tick.
Thank you. All right, consideration to approve the minutes. You have in your package the February 21st minutes and the March 7th minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or just other things? Oh, we have the overall agenda vote. That's the only one was Bryan, right? That was the only minute. Okay. Does your favor signify saying aye?
Aye.
No? All right, we have that. Did you have anything else?
One minutes.
One minutes, yes.
So I just abstained from the March 7th since I wasn't here.
Okay. Same. Mr. Rush and Mr. Cummins abstained. You weren't there either, were you?
Good on the right side, wasn't he? Far left was.
That was Alan's seven.
It's a majority of the members are feeling the same. Keep, it was out of time, right? Sorry.
Okay, so...
Why do you just kind of vote on the minutes where it won't pass?
Okay.
Because they have to take a majority of those present, including those who stayed in.
Jack, vote, okay. All right, well, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and just vote on the 21st minutes of the motion to approve the February 21st minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? If not, does your favor signify saying aye?
Aye.
No? On the March 7th minutes, do we have a motion to approve it?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion second. All votes in favor signify saying aye?
Aye.
No? Pass. Don't let Susan worry about which one she... Did, did or did not vote. Uh, Mr. Bryan, you will lead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel like right before this public input, I'm a little, one of the little mice that's fixing to be swooped down and gobbled up by the giant hawk. So I just want my say-so for just a minute here to make a couple of points. Five and a half years ago, you, the voters, asked for a new way of conducting the affairs of the city. It wanted involved informed and engaged council members to shake up the old way of doing things. Up until then, the council meetings typically lasted 15 minutes unless there was a big zoning issue. And the council always did just whatever the mayor told them to do. You wanted that changed, you've got to change. Earlier this week, for the first time in recent history, possibly the first time in the city of Canton history, the city council allowed you, the voters, to decide if you wanted the city to take on any additional debt. That's what the election was about. Remember the wording, "Shall general obligation bonds in the aggregate amount of up to $6 million be issued by the city of Canton to finance the acquisition design and development of up to three fire stations, renovate the downtown fire station, finance the acquisition of new firefighting vehicles?" That was the question that was asked. Do we borrow money or not to do those things? That was the question, yes or no. Ninety-six plus percent, or ninety-three plus percent of the people said, "We don't even care, y'all do what you want to do." About four and a half percent said no, and about two percent said yes. Now, again, that's what the question was. There's been, there's going to be probably a lot of derisive comments and statements made against particularly the council members that chose to speak their mind on this, exercise their constitutional right, share their opinion, and try to inform the voters. I think three of us, myself, Mr. Cummins, Mr. Goodwin, chose to remain silent. The other three, Bear, Stewart, Huffman, and Rush, stuck their necks out bravely, I might add. It has nothing to do with egos. It has nothing to do with personal agendas, self-serving, anything. We allowed you, the voters, to make this decision because we respect you. We are not going to put the city in any further debt because that's what you told us you wanted us to do. So have at it. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the 10-minute public input. I'd like to ask Bob Seguin, Segwin, to come in, come out first and speak. As a director, I'll be at it.
Yes, Bob's coming to the elect, and I wanted to mention, I've had the privilege to work along with Bob a little bit at the theater there as we tried to get our movies put into the, into the theater. And Bob is quite an extraordinary talent. We're so blessed to have him. DDA did a great job selecting a super person to run the theater. He's acted, directed, you know, he, he has the experience. And to run a small-town theater like he's running is quite, quite an attribute that he has. We've had some events lately that have just been fantastic, bringing a lot of people into the city, is going to help all of our merchants. And Bob, I want to thank you and the DDA. If you would, kind of give some ideas of some things you want to bring forward.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Mr. Mayor, Consulman, I'm here on behalf of the Canton Theater. If you haven't seen me around down there, they're like all the time. You come by and see us. I wanted to mention to you about the Katie Deal, Patsy Cline tribute that we had at the theater with Governor Deal and Mrs. Deal, and how well it went, and what kind of response I've had, and I still have, about the governor coming to the theater. Other groups have approached me and said, "How do we get Governor Deal to come to our group?" And this is, it was a terrific evening. I was just so pleased with how everything went. Since then, I've embarked on getting movies. And I tell you, it is not an easy thing because you have a lot of people getting ideas of what they want to see, and it has to be the first one. The first one was a soft opening. We had Chocolat with Johnny Depp, Julia Van Oosh for Valentine's Day. And if you hadn't read it in the newspaper, we partnered with the Painted Pig and had Dinner Movie, and that went very well. We made a few dollars on it. Painted Pig wants to get together with the Canton Theater again and have another, another co-mingle of, of time and movies. Before I go any further, I want, for that, for that Patsy Cline tribute, I just want to make a, a couple of thank yous, and I have to do it in front of everybody because it is not only myself that works at the theater, and I have a lot of people that come in, a volunteer, and I'm looking for more volunteers, but I want to thank Mr. Goodwin particularly, and David and Terry Whitaker. Now, David and Terry Whitaker, you might know, is, David is with the Shagtones. And the Shagtone is my connection to Governor Deal. Governor Deal and the Shagtones, the Shagtones is Governor Deal's inaugural fan. And that's how this whole thing came about with the governor, with Katie Deal coming in. But I do want to thank Mr. Goodwin for his input, his talent, his knowledge on getting all this together. It's not only a one-man band, believe me. But I want to, many people have asked me, "What's the next movie? What are we doing next?" Well, coming next week, we've got a formal ribbon cutting. Unfortunately, it's scheduled on Thursday, or not, oh, no, I'm sorry, not next week, the week after, the 4th. It's scheduled on Thursday at 5:00. We're having a ribbon cutting for the movie part of our Canton Theater. So we invite everybody to come to the ribbon cutting. And then after that, we're going to show Raiders of the Lost Ark, which is our first movie at the theater, which is the original Indiana Jones, if you don't know, if you're too young, the Indiana Jones movie with Harrison Ford. Then we are going to have a Saturday show. We're going to be showing different Disney movies on Saturday, at least once a month for now. And the reason, I'm looking for sponsors for this. So everybody, anybody who's in business over here and wants to sponsor a Saturday because it's going to be free for children and parents, we've got to have the parents in there, too. You can't just drop off the kids. I can't take them, take care of them, all of them. So we're going to have, the first one we're going to show is Davy Crockett, King of the Wild Frontier. That's the first one, first Saturday morning movie, and that's going to be, that's from 1955, actually. That's going to be April the 20th at 10:30 and 1:00. Then the next one we're coming up with is Grease. The original Grease, which is 35th anniversary of the movie, with Travolta and Olivia Newton-John. And we're showing that in, in May, May 2nd. And by the way, the tickets for these shows are $5. I mean, we're not asking a heck of a lot of money for the shows. I want to make it affordable for everybody. If you go up to Riverstone and pay for a brand-new movie, it's like $10, $12. We're asking $5. Plus, my popcorn machine is going to be in next week. So come and have some fresh popcorn. But on the, the Grease event, I'm asking for classic cars, 1950s, 1960s, to be on the street for that first Friday. I'm asking for poodle skirts and black leather jackets, all in the same great theme as Grease from, that's from 1978, so. So we have a lot of ideas, a lot of things happening. You all stop in and see us sometime, and I'd love to have anybody volunteer for the theater, believe me. We need help down there. I can't do it all by myself. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
I completely appreciate what you did, Bob. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Michelle Generalis? Did you sign up to speak?
I just signed in.
Oh, you just signed in.
Sorry.
How about Linda Holmes Rubin? Yes, come in.
I think a few people here might remember me, but I know we've got a number of new council members who may not remember some or be aware of some of the issues that are still outstanding with the new reservoir. And we're all very happy that, you know, it's finally going to open after many years, but there are a number of issues that are still outstanding. In October of 2010, my property and some of my neighbors' properties received with eminent domain. And this was a very contentious issue because of the way it was done and the manipulation of the dates of the filing of the condemnation and the actual service of the condemnation. And we actually took this to the Court of Appeals, and we won our case. The eminent domain was vacated. And the court basically said that the way it was done was unjust in that the dates were such that there was no way we could have a date to have our case heard, and we were denied due process. In January of 2012, the city bought substitute land for the easements that were required. At that point, we were supposed to be paid our legal fees. Because, again, if you get substitute land and you don't use the land for eminent domain, the land is supposed to be returned and the legal fees covered. That never happened. Then on May 17th, 2012, we filed a civil action, full payment of our legal fees. Again, they are still not paid. You have not officially returned our property. This is still outstanding. On March 5th, Bob Goddard's going to come in that these things will be handled. It's still not here. And again, I would like to know when the city intends to pay what they are legally obligated to pay, and how much longer I should be expected to wait for something that should have been handled more than a year ago. Again, I'm a working person like a lot of you. This has cost me an enormous amount of money and a horrible amount of grief because the property you were trying to take from me would actually cut off access to my house. So I would not have had assured legal access to my home. This has been on my mind now for almost three years. And again, I would like to know when this is going to be paid and when this is going to be handled because I think that we have been treated extremely badly. And, you know, again, I would like a date cert when this is going to be handled. You already have the invoices, you know what the amount is. I don't see any reason for any further delay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goodwin.
I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I also thank Mr. Bryan for his input earlier about the council members and the referendum that was brought up for vote on Tuesday. There's no way that any comments or any opinions that I bring forward are meant to disrespect any members of the council or of the community. What I would like to say, though, is the referendum was voted on this week, and the message was clear to the council that the approach offered was not what the citizens want. It is not acceptable in the form that was offered. Citizens will not approve a $6 million bond that lacks the details needed. They will not approve a bond that has funding to cover some of those stations that are currently serviced by the county without clear information and consultation with the county that they are on board with the funding of those stations. The citizens will not accept a proposed cost offer by only one source or a source not experienced in the past building of the fire stations. I understand the well intentioned of the council persons who support this, but please do it right. Citizens will not pay for a pig and a hole. The city CFO has spoken with persons for and against the referendum, and that is, and it is a source of most knowledge about the city of Canton, about funds that can be accessed to develop an acceptable plan. My information, and that's what I've received from a variety of sources and a variety of opinions, that both sides agree on is that the failed proposal would have increased taxes in excess of 50% over five years, not acceptable to the taxpayers, especially those who will bear the brunt of that cost. And those are the people who have no exemptions in any way that are related to that. The ISO rating that's been represented and possibly misrepresented that I... that I don't personally understand is the reference to the nine times, the nine on the ISO for some areas. And I'd like clarification about that. It may well apply to some citizens, but I'm not sure in what area those are. And if that really takes into account their access also to the county facilities that are close by. Show me a map that proves that if this does exist. Many residents, city residents approve adding a firehouse and updating a downtown fire station. There is no backlash, not, I got to think about this. I do better sometimes to get it off the top of my head. There won't be a backlash not to cover this if the need is there. And I'm sure most of you residents will agree that there is a need. All ages know the importance of our fire service and our sharing of that with Cherokee County. And that's been an ongoing process over, I don't know how many years, but I know that it exists and it has been amiable. EMS is well received and cooperative with service between the city and the county at this time. The need is to meet with the Cherokee County officials and determine their agenda to replace the two stations that they have that are due updates and that there are funds assigned to for those projects. Council persons have told me if Canton attempts to build those location, some council persons have told me if Canton attempts to build those locations, the county will abandon their pursuit as such and we will have a full bill with no assistance from the county to pay for them. I don't know that that's so and I'm not, I, I'm from Missouri, show me. You know, it is my understanding that when I am given information as fact, that I want to really have that information based on fact, on sound information to date. I don't feel that that has happened in many instances. And I'm not singling out any one group to say that about. I would respectfully hope the council will consider what I've said and the concerns of how these people have spoken. I know that you've given us percentages on what the voting is. I think if we take out the percentages on any election that's put forward. There are very few local elections that gather and garner a large group to vote. But I do, I do believe that you have had a better conception than may have been felt was representative vote. City needs all of us to do our best and not act hastily and move on this. Thank you.
Thank you. John Rush?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I think it's very fitting that we swore in the 2050 Commission on Canton's Future tonight, when within the last few days we finished the Marietta Streetscape Monument. As a city, we are looking back and learning from the past while preserving what we hold dear. And at the same time, looking forward to the future of this great city of Canton. All the people who were involved in making this monument a reality should be proud. The city of Canton certainly is proud of your work. It is absolutely beautiful. Thank you all. Bill Bryan, that's one for the doves. You said the hawks and doves.
Oh, oh, thank you.
I got a dog. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Sandy McGrew?
Hi, Councilman. Mayor, I'm Sandy McGrew from Great Scott. And I am truly excited about the commission for Canton's future. And I look forward to the concentrated progressive movement toward Canton to the future. And I wanted to personally thank Mr. Huffman and Mr. Rush for the opportunity to have the town hall meeting. It was a nice meeting. It was nice to feel heard and have the opportunity to come together and speak. And I just wanted to give you a sincere thank you. I could have written you a thanking note, but I wanted to do it publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have now one item on the consent agenda, that being the award of the Lower Scott Mill contract to strip the pipeline construction for $174,000, $523.70, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Motion to approve. Have a motion seconded, any other discussion? If not, those in favor, say the five to saying aye. Aye, aye, votes no. All members voting for the motion. Under old business, the action on the award of Marietta Road Streetscape contract to the lowest bidder, CMES, for a million, $773,539.30, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Any discussion? Motion. Motion to approve, have a second? Any other discussion? Not those in favor, say the five to saying aye. Aye, aye, votes no. All members voting for the motion. Item B, Fire Department Service Delivery Methodologies, Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of you may remember that I had this item on a prior agenda, but removed it for discussion at a later time. The reason I removed it was because I felt it was going to be me stating fire delivery service methodologies to council members who had already made up their minds and were not open to giving all options thorough consideration. But now we've had a referendum and the populace has very clearly spoken, this discussion is appropriate. I said the populace had very clearly spoken. There was a quote in the paper from a council member who does not believe that the 518 no votes is representative of the populace. But the same council member was elected with 520 votes or just two more than the no votes. And I do not remember that council member saying that his election did not represent the populace. The voters have overwhelmingly...
Mr. Cummings, you can trust me.
I have the floor, please. The voters have overwhelmingly rejected the methodology of expanding our city fire services by building three stations, doubling our fire department staff, increasing our costs for the fire department by approximately 125%, and having a mileage rate that is almost double what the county charges for equivalent services. But the voters did not tell us they want us, but the voters did not tell us that they want us to study in thorough detail other options. There are at least three other options. First, we could develop a hybrid city operated fire department with a minimal employed staff and a well-trained volunteer force. And then slowly build and staff additionally needed stations with a minimal tax impact. We should look at other cities, as Mr. Bryan has often recommended, and see how they have built fire stations at much lower cost than $800,000. And LaGrange is a good example. They built a 5,000 square foot fire station for under $500,000. This is a methodology that Peachtree City, McDonough, and Garden City use very cost effectively. By the way, Garden City is whom Mr. Rush had used in a prior meeting for suggesting a consultant be hired to figure out new ways to raise revenue using a fee-based tax. They have an ISO 3. Their budget for this year, I believe, is $800,000. They have two stations, 10 firefighters, and 20 volunteers. A second option we should thoroughly explore, which we never did, is consolidation with the county, not as we heretofore rejected it outright. And third, we should consider a different hybrid approach whereby we continue to maintain our two existing stations, making improvements in service and contract with the county for them to build and operate stations on the extremities of the city limits, covering certain portions of the city while serving the adjacent county area. These may not be all the methodologies open to us, but it does show that we have not considered everything as we should have. Mr. Mayor, I'm asking you to reopen the Fire Service Committee and instruct that committee to investigate all options without any preconceived agenda or bias.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I do think that, you know, in view of the referendum, I think we do need to step back and, you know, not rush into anything. Make sure we're, we've looked at all alternatives. And I think it is appropriate that we have a committee that could look at the various alternatives and study it in depth and hopefully listen to the, to input from the public on their ideas, recognizing the need that we, that we have, how is the best way and most economical way to provide those services? So I would ask that, Mr. Cummings, Mr. Bryan, if you would, and Mr. Goodman, if you would, work on a committee that to help look at those and help make some recommendations. I would appreciate it. Any other items on this?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. You know, the vote was made, the vote is accepted. I was hoping to have a fresh start tonight in trying to work through the issues that this city needs for a fire department. But it seems like Mr. Cummings wants to belabor a point. The point is consolidation. The bond referendum was for a bond, not consolidation. And consolidation became the key word. And I sat through numerous meetings with Mr. Cummings and we looked at six options. And the number six option was consolidation. We went through other points. We spent a lot of time. But being that it was not acceptable by that committee, when that was brought forward, it was brought forward again and we had a five to one vote. We have a five to one vote. That means five individuals made an individual decision, let's move on. But no, Mr. Cummings continues to have to drive this consolidation issue. I'd say it was a five to one vote. We spent, I spent over a year going through all different options, looking at different opportunities and looking at different things. A number of people who have no clue on what the effort and energy that was put forth has no problem throwing rocks and stones, which is fine. I happen to be in this political seat, I accept that. But I do not accept the fact that an individual cannot get over the fact that the vote was five to one. Let's move on. The vote was turned out for the bond. Let's move on. Let's look at other opportunities.
I believe that the vote that he's referring to was a vote whether or not, it wasn't a vote not to do consolidation. That was, that was never the vote. The vote was not to allow Mr. Wood to meet with the county and to come back with some sort of agreement or proposal for the council to vote on.
Mr. Mayor?
That's what it was.
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Two facts. I want to correct a few things that Mr. Barrisford said. First of all, the committee that we had composed, was composed of Mr. Barrisford and myself and Mr. Bryan. Mr. Bryan, due to whatever reason, was unable to attend any meeting. That committee came out with the decision to only do the minimal amount. There was never a decision made by that committee and presented to this council. The only decision that was made was that we would do the minimum things in order to maintain our ISO 4. As I reviewed it on June 21st, I made the motion that we should ask Mr. Wood to further investigate and discuss and enter into negotiations and bring back to this council a proposal, not consolidate. And the third point that I'd like to correct, I have offered you three options tonight, none of which says I specifically stated consolidation. There is one of consolidation and there are two hybrid methods. Now, with that correction, we should look at it. Has anybody looked at Kennesaw and how they do it? They do a consolidation, they use Cobb County Fire. We haven't looked deep enough into what we need to look into. We just don't, we just charge off into the sunset and want to do something. We need to look at all options. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
But I happily, I believe Mr. Barrisford would wish to add to the committee.
Excellent point on the June council meeting. Problem is, in May, the city and the county met with the fire department, with the city manager, and Jerry Cooper's. The group came in, laid out their plan. It's on the minutes of that meeting what was discussed. They came in and said, here's what we will offer. We asked at that meeting to bring back a formal dialogue so that we could react to it. They never did. Therefore, we moved ahead in June and that's the facts.
Aye, Mr. Huffman?
Yes, so, I'll echo what Mr. Barrisford said there. Those statements from the last sentence in the May 2nd or 3rd meeting, I looked at them myself and it stated very clearly that Mr. Cooper already had the papers drawn up, which means it's a lot of work that's already done before. I assumed he had them and that Mr. Cooper and the mayor, our mayor, would get back to us. It never happened. It never happened and you know that. Now, you, the mayor, Mr. Cummings, may have gone over there. I'm not sure of the date of that, but it never came back. And I'd like, I'll put your hand in, please. You'll get your time. That first committee, that first committee, and I'll just have to say this because I sat in it, I wasn't appointed to it, but I did sit in on it. It was a complete failure as far as the committee. I sat through many, many committees over my time. It was a pretty pathetic one, committee. And that's the reason it fell apart and that's the reason people quit attending. I will say this, Mr. Mayor, I'm open. Those are some, some thoughts that Mr. Cummings brings forth. I'm open to, to listen to that. I'm not, absolutely not. We've been talking about this since the year 2000. It is time that our people up in Great Scott, Laurel Canyon, get some relief and quit dragging this thing out, Mr. Mayor. Fine, have another committee. We need action to start immediately on Laurel Canyon, regardless. We need, we got the plan, we got, we need to move forward. It's, it is dragged out too long and I anticipate this next committee is going to drag out again. We just need to move forward. And we can, you know this, we've discussed that we can get this done for that one station. We can get this done without having bonds and so forth like that. We can do that on our own. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. After what I'm going to say, you may want to reconsider putting me on the committee and I will sit definitely, not be on there if you don't want me to. But I was on first committee. I had schedule conflicts and medical issues. I could not attend, but I did speak with several county officials and they know who they are. I never could get any commitment out of any of them as to what they would do for the city as far as consolidation. I continually asked them for specifics and I could never get any commitments whatsoever. Now, what Mr. Huffman has said about the Laurel Canyon Station is absolutely true. When, when people were buying homes in Laurel Canyon, what, eight and 10 years ago, they were promised then there would be a fire station built. We owned the property to build a fire station in Laurel Canyon. We, actually, I understand, have the funds available or will have to begin construction of that station.
of that station. We have the trucks for it already bought and paid for. Whether we consolidate or not, that station's got to be built. It's going to be built. I'm not going to be willing to look very hard at consolidation based on the last experience. If the, I don't see any point in discussing it until the county comes to us with a proposal. We're still waiting. We've not gotten it yet, it's been a year. We still have no concrete commitment from the county as to what they will do, as to what the, how the senior exemption will be. That is huge. The facts are, the legal facts are, if we consolidate, our senior exemption for fire services will be gone. The seniors will pay the same as everybody else. That's a fact. Unless the county submits a writing, that they will not do that. When they consolidated with the city of Holly Springs, the county told them the seniors could keep the exemption, but when it came down to it, they did not. They removed the senior exemption from Holly Springs. Holly Springs seniors pay the same as everybody in Holly Springs for fire services, the same thing's going to happen in Canton. Now, we want to open all that up again, that's fine, but we need to build this Laurel Canyon Station now. Again, we've got the resources to do it, we've even got the trucks to do it. No, we don't have the staff, but we will. If we have to raise the military rate, we'll do that. If we consolidate with the county, the station goes to the county. Volunteers, whatever, but, but I am not going to give any, waste any more of my time messing around with consolidation until I have something in writing from the county as to what they will do, and including what they're going to do for our, our senior exemption.
Would you, would you not be willing to, to discuss that in a meeting with them? I mean, I mean, I, I think that's, that has to be done now.
No, 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 sir, I wouldn't, because I've already done it with, with several different officials, elected officials.
Individually? Are you talking about individually?
Correct. And they have not, nobody has offered any commitment yet, so I'm open to listening to what they're going to, to, I want it in writing, though. No more talking. I'm done talking with the county about consolidation. Like Ms. Day said, I'm not from Missouri, but show me, show me something in writing, and show me you're going to preserve the senior exemption in writing.
Mr. Mayor. Three points. First point, the first council meeting that neither Mr. Barrisford or Mr. Bryant, committee me, I'm sorry, that neither Mr. Bryant nor Mr. Barrisford were at, Mr. Cooper and Mr. Aaron's came to it. And, and you were there, and I laid out very specific, minimal requirements, and they were very simply stated, and I'll repeat it in a minute when I tell you what the motion we made on June 21st. Number one, build two stations in this city, one at the north, one over by Canton Marketplace. Number two condition was very simply put, place two ambulances stationed in the city. Now, I had specified both of the two new stations. They concurred with placing one at the Laurel Canyon Station, but would not commit to where they would place the second ambulance. The third condition was that they would absorb all personnel in equivalent positions within it. In concept, that has to be approved by the county commission, but in concept, they agree. And that the charge of Canton residents be the same fire district rate as charged outside in the county, which happens to be currently 3.394 mils. They came later when we had a little question about the senior exemption, and offered to find a way that we could grandfather current seniors into that exemption as long as they remained in their home. Once that home was sold, the exemption would disappear. If they bought another home and moved from home A to home B, they would not get the exemption on home B. The proposal that Mr. Huffman and Mr. Bryant are talking about, and I'm going to give you an analogy, and then I'll give you a specific wording of what was said. The analogy is like this young man that's waiting for a girl to invite her, him to the sorority prom dance or sorority dance, and she's waiting for it to be invited, and all he remembers is her telling him he's ugly and stupid, or we don't want to be with you. You're not going to get a proposal as long as the resistance has shown here that we don't, aren't even interested. In fact, in the June 21st meeting, second point, the motion was as follows. I made a motion that the city manager begin discussion and negotiations with Jerry Cooper of Cherokee County in regard to the consolidation of the city and county fire services culminating in an intergovernmental agreement to be brought before the council at its meeting on August 2nd, 2012, for discussion and possible adoption. The minimal terms of any agreement would be that two new stations be built in the north and east sections of the city, that two ambulances be stationed within the city, that all Canton Fire Department personnel and equipment be absorbed by the county, that the charge to Canton residents be the same fire district tax rate as charged to all other residences and businesses within Cherokee County, and that a firefighting training facility eventually be built in Cherokee County. Councilman Barrisford seconded that motion, and following the discussion, a roll call vote was taken, everybody voting no except for myself, so the motion failed.
So, in essence, what you say is, the discussions that we had prior to the June council meeting with the county was for no. So then what we had to do is turn around and come back and ask them to come back again. Point one, senior exemptions, they threw it out as a possible. It came back, they cannot do that. They cannot do that. Number two, we're asked to give up $3.5 million of our assets to give to the county. Thank you very much. The next thing is, we're also required to give part of our splash. Thank you very much. It's a gift, a gift and a gift. So, don't date an ugly girl.
Just want you clearly understood that I was open to the, the thought of consolidation then, and if they bring me a written proposal, I'll look at it. They're not going to be able to, to do anything with the senior exemption, or they'll have to go back and retroactively do it with Holly Springs. They took it away there, they're going to take it away here. Show me something in writing, Mr. Cummings, show me all these proposals in writing, what they're willing to do, then we have the beginning of a negotiation. Otherwise, we have nothing. We've had a year.
Wait, I'm with you.
We've had a year, a year, more than a year, we still don't have anything from them in writing. We don't have anything from them on any commitment to the senior exemption. We don't have any commitment of what fire station they're going to build. This business about the ambulances is a bunch of baloney. The ambulances is completely independent. Every county has one licensed ambulance provider, Cherokee County is the, the county. They have to serve us properly with ambulances. We have committed to them, they will have the place to park the ambulance in the Laurel Canyon Station. That is a commitment, that has been made to the county. If they want it in writing, that can be done in writing. They have got to legally provide the proper ambulance service to this county, they will do that. Anybody that tries to connect the ambulance business to the fire department, consolidation or not, is just either misinformed or deliberately trying to pull the wool over somebody's eyes. Ambulances has nothing to do with it, ambulance service will be provided. Again, show me, and, and I'll, I'll consider it.
Mr. Hough. Thank you. During that particular time, I don't, I don't have the exact date, but when did we, when did we have that big a parking lot? Was it going on?
I don't remember. It was before, shortly after, it was a four June or May, I guess.
But that came in there, and that's where the commissioner of that report came out that was very detrimental to our fire department, which our chief went through and pointed out some of the, some of the areas. And I, I have to say that that cast a shadow over any conversation. And that's when, on August 25th, Commissioner Johnston stood up here in front of all of us and stated how much our fire department was superior to theirs. And that was done, it was nice of him to do that, to make amends for what the county commissioner was throwing rocks at us. Folks throwing rocks at us and trying to get in bed at the same time, it's, it's just not a good combination, I don't think. And we can sit here and talk about this back and forth, I agree, I sat in the meeting there with all the three or four attendees there, and I remember very distinctly when Mr. Cummings said, this is what we want, this is what we want, this is what we want, and the, Mr. Cooper and Mr. Aaron sat there and said, we'll do that, we'll do that, we'll do that, with some reservations. Folks, we're talking about doing these type of things. You don't do them that way, you put them in writing. And they were told at the end of that meeting, bring it to us. It was your responsibility, was Mr. Cooper. Mr. Mayor called a question.
There's no question. I'd like to call the court.
Mr., he had a comment.
I don't think there's any question to call, I don't think it's in the motion, but, but. That's exactly what I, that's exactly what I came, I wanted to say, that I've kind of grown weary of the Whooshah Johnson area we're doing, and the mayor, you've appointed a commission, a committee. I think that committee should look at, particularly at consolidation with the county as, as the next item on the agenda, I have the proposal that, that will be an adjunct to that committee. So I, I just liked us to quit.
Well, I've got to say this, we had more discussion tonight on this issue than we had in, I think, all the previous year than we've had with this issue about consolidation coming up. I think we've had more discussion, and I think that's good. But I, I do think that hopefully this commission will be reasonably unbiased and, and consider the, all the options, and maybe make a recommendation as to what is the best thing for the, what's in the best interest of the city at the most economical cost to the taxpayers. And we have to keep that in mind all, at anything we do, I think. Okay, the next item of this, let's see, motion and possible action on fire department funding. Mr. Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in October of last year, I presented to the council a proposal by a company called Ecological Planning Group, which had done the fire protection services study for Garden City, which Mr. Cummings referenced. And I'm suggesting that, that we, in fact, I'm going to make a motion that we instruct the city manager to, to get, sign a contract with this group not to exceed $15,000 to study all the possible alternatives for funding our fire department, given the planning that the council had projected for three fire stations. Now, this is simply a proposal, it's something that they have done, they're experienced in, they can look at it, and this would not include, or we could include, the, the consolidation with the county as part of the study. But I think in working independently of the committee, and then all of these things being presented together, the council and the people will have a better understanding of where we can go with our fire system, fire protection system. So I'm, I'm making a motion that the city manager enter into a contract with Ecological Planning Group not to exceed $15,000 to, for a fire protection feasibility study.
Sir, motion and second. Any other discussion, Mr. Cummings?
Since you have informed the committee, my question might be is, they're looking at one particular option that we just looked at, at ways of funding it according to the, the last October meeting. I would like that since we have expanded all of the options that we're going to be looking at, that they present to the committee, and the committee will use whatever information they provide in that particular option as comparison to what the other options would be. If Mr. Rush doesn't have any objection to doing that.
I'm, I'm not sure what, I understand that you said that was different than what I said.
Well, I, I wasn't sure whether you were wanting them to operate separately, reporting to council back or coming to the committee, so they can include that study within all of the options that the committee is going to undertake instead.
I think, my suggestion was that they operate in parallel.
Where would they present it? Because the committee is going to come back with the, all the options.
They, they present it to the committee, they can present it to the council, but I think they should, that we can do it either way, but I, I think it should, the committee's going to make a presentation to the council, this group can make a presentation at the council.
The committee should include that option within their presentation. That's the only point that I draw.
I just wanted to clarify, I thought I heard Bob say that, that this consulting firm would, would, would consider different funding options, right?
Correct.
But, but, but not all options, or not, not the, not the consolidation option?
Well, I'm not sure if we want to include that since the committee's going to be working on that option and, and discussing with the county. I, I don't know if this group would, has, has included in their proposal consultation with the county at this point. I'm sure they have not, because the original proposal was a feasibility study for fire services as they did for the city of Garden City.
Well, I'm wondering if you'd consider re-expanding and directing them to consider the option of consolidation, their statewide.
I have, I have no objections to that.
And, and, and because, you know, they're obviously better equipped to look at these options than we are. I mean, I feel like I've already earned my two grand a year, and it's just March. So, you know, let's, 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 um, let's expand it if we need to, and, and they, they can bring back examples of, of how consolidations have worked, and what, what our particular, you know, let's do that, and then the, the committee can work in parallel as well.
That's fine with me. Mr. Mayor.
I, I don't.
I was after him.
Oh, okay. All right.
Thank you. You know, here we go again. We go to look to outside resources, professional resources, and I think that that group has come before, and we have seen some of the things they've done. They are professional, and I think that this council has proven that they have no clue on what should be done and how it should be done. We sat here and argued back and forth numerous times, so we're going to have another committee sit and play around twiddlywinks, twiddlydinks are what it's called, and we have a professional group that's going to come and bring forward their input to us. Tiddlywinks, there you go. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings.
I sort of see this as putting the cart before the horse. We haven't even defined the options, and now we're going to engage a consultant to tell us how to fund what we have defined. It, it just doesn't make sense to me that they do that. The original intent of this consultant, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rush, was to determine how to develop a fire district fee-based funding method, and that was their quotation of $15,000, was to develop that fire district fee-based funding method, and nothing else. Is that correct, or am I wrong?
Mr. Mayor.
The precise wording was a fire protection user fee system feasibility study. And that, that would include funding the fire department. I mean, you got to fund a few, we've always said, everybody asked me, I told someone the other day, we're planning on, we hope to build the Laurel Canyon Station, they said, where's the money coming from? This will tell us where the money's coming from.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm trying to do.
I only released it, I only released it, Mr. Mayor, for the answer.
Oh, it's me?
Yes.
Actually, the ball keeps going back. Actually, I think, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Cummings' request there is a very simple answer, is get the committee together real quick here and define it. I don't think that takes long, I would hope it could be done within an hour or two, that 'd be before we can...
That'd be before we can get Mr. Rush's, um, group up here to listen to what the committee has defined and let them go to work. That's part one. Part two, do we, Mr. Mayor, do we have a motion or are we still in discussion?
He has a motion.
Yeah, he's got a motion.
Okay. I would like to make a motion, but I'll, I'll.
Go away, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't think that committee needs to be to define it. I think it's very simple. This, this consulting firm will be directed to recommend the best way for Canton to move forward with funding or expanding, whatever you want to call it, giving the citizens the fire protection it needs. Now, if this company can't do it, then we need to find one that can. Obviously, none of us are experts. I think that it would be totally de-politicized that way if, if you have experts who have done it in the past, look at our situation, the city, the county, the pattern of growth, the boundaries, the ISOs, all these options, and tell us what's the best bang for the buck for the city of Canton's citizens to be fire protected the best way possible. It's not complicated. We don't have to meet with the committee to determine that.
Mr. Mayor?
If that study does what he just said, I haven't got a problem with it. It looks at every single option, including consolidation, including hybrid options, including expanding the staff, and then comes back with the most cost-effective method as a recommendation. I have no problem with that. I have a problem with just looking at how to fund it. They, but if they're going to do this entire comprehensive look at all options and will take from council suggestions as to what options are available and what other cities use those kind of options or what other counties use those kind of options, I got no problem with doing that.
Listen, first of all, just to comment to Mr. Cummins' comment, I don't want council to interfere with those people at all. Give them definition, tone it loose. I don't want influences.
You know, the, I guess the, the only thing I, I would be concerned about there, and I certainly don't have a problem with doing what Mr. Ryan said there, but I believe, I believe the proposal was just to, basically, and correct me if I'm wrong, was just to develop a fee-based system for funding the operation of the fire department. Did it have other considerations?
The statement here is, "The proposed study will review the fire department's current level and cost of service as well as future proposed level and associated increase in cost of service. The study then will look at various rate methodologies for fire protection fees in Georgia and make recommendations most appropriate." And we can ask them, I mean, I could, I'd be happy to ask them if they can expand the scope to look at other inputs is included in the future projected services that we have and see what they say. And I would presume that would not increase the cost of the contract.
Call the court. Okay. Thank you.
All right, uh, let me ask one question for you. Based on this, we have to have another vote for the signing of the contract since we don't have a contract at this point, or are we just want, I mean, we can go ahead and vote to approve, disapprove the, the request there to go ahead and move, but we have to have five votes on this contract?
I suspect contracts will change. Well, obviously, that can increase the scope and, and I bet the money's going to change.
I mean, that's, there's a limit on this of fifteen thousand and their quote was fourteen thousand.
I think it's safer just kind of starting over with them and coming back with another proposal if everybody's in agreement that that's the way you want to go. As opposed to trying to vote on that and then, and change it and all, that's going to be a whole new deal, I think.
So we need to, we need to receive, we have a, a motion and second on the floor here now, this.
I'd like to ask Mr. Rush to withdraw his motion on this current contract and ask that he obtain a contract that expands the scope and bring it back to council for a vote. I could do that.
Can you do that, can you do that in two weeks?
Yeah, I, because, yeah, I think I can do that within two weeks.
Okay.
No trouble.
So you will be withdrawing your motion?
I'll withdraw the motion to approve the contract as written and.
Okay.
We'll go for one that'll expand the scope of the contract.
Okay.
I'd also request them to put the options that I have identified as possibilities into that scope. We'll, we'll talk to the people.
So would that been with, you were thinking?
Yeah, maybe with, you know, with, okay.
All right. I want to push the issue. We're talking about fire. I want the motion that we ask Mr. Wood to gather the resources to start the building of Laurel Canyon Fire Station as soon as we possibly can.
Is that motion?
Yes.
Second. Got a motion and second. Any discussion?
Is that before we discuss it with the speaker?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. Mayor?
I, I'm not sure the, the motion is directing him to do what exactly, gather what?
The, the resources that we presently have within the city, and I'm talking about financial resources, to start the construction, we got three or four places that we can draw from.
Are you asking him to bring to us those specific?
Those line items.
Line items?
Yes.
Where the money may be to, to begin that?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a motion to do that, to ask him to do that?
Well, I want to put it formally because I want to bring this forward. I don't want to wait on, on the committees. I want to wait another day on committees.
We have a motion and second.
Let me see if I understand this correctly. He's going to bring forward where the money would come from. This is not a motion to begin construction.
Well, I'd like to say is to begin construction, yes. And then, but I know that you're going to ask where is the money come from?
I, I'd like to see where the money's coming from before we start digging holes in the ground.
I understand that and that's very reasonable. But my point here, I'm trying to make is, I'm trying to make a point, I'm tired of committees, I'm tired of talking about something we've been talking about since the year two thousand.
Yes, sir, I'd just like to make a comment. I think that's a good idea. There's nothing wrong with working in parallel. Tax, we, we can be prepared to begin the construction of the Laurel Canyon Fire Station and if, if, if we, we, there's nothing wrong with going ahead with that, going ahead and being ready, everything we need in place, all the RFPs in place, because again, it's got to be built anyway. Why delay it any longer, no matter what anybody consulting, why it says or not, there's got to be a fire station built at Laurel Canyon and the taxpayers got, got to pay for it. So I think that's good. Let's, let's, let's move forward with that and move forward with the study at the same time.
And there's, there's no reason for this to interfere with the, the committee, you know, if they decide that we want to staff it with volunteers or if we want to merge it or whatever the committee comes up with, that's fine. Well, just let that sit, just phase in just like the other stations.
I got no problem with doing the preparatory work. I just don't want to be see a caterpillar out there digging in the ground until we know how much it's going to cost us and where it's going to come from.
I just want to get it off the table.
Susan, you want to read that motion?
Yes, sir.
We made a motion that the city manager gather resources to start the Laurel Canyon Station.
So it's not, what, what the motion is, as I understand it, is that the city manager would bring back to us at the next meeting, I guess.
I think, I think you mean to identify some funding options or alternatives.
That we presently already have.
That's it, that's already here, not future. But that's in-house, in the bank that you can write a check for, I assume?
When the time, when the, when the time is needed to write the check. We're not going to write a check. We're not going to write an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar check to start off with.
Is that, does everybody understand that?
So we're, we're talking about financial projection because we're not going to start digging holes in the ground today, so it's not based on the money we got to buy today.
No.
It's based on some scheduled, reasonable schedule out in the future with every six months, whatever, how much money we're going to have to have. All of it. So we'll know, we'll know what we're dealing with. We'll lose everything, everything we have as an asset now that goes for the station that we will have at the time of construction.
So that doesn't include any options that we don't already have in-house, I assume?
Or will be getting in-house within.
Well, I mean, there's only a few of those out there. There's a general fund and there's sales tax and I don't know, there may be grants or something, but I don't know if you count them if you don't have them in hand. What else, what else would, would there be?
General fund.
Well, gen, that's why I said, general fund taxes.
Sure, based on any income as it grows.
And we will be gathering swashbuckling that you can use that.
Right, sales tax and general fund taxes is the only two right now that we have that we can project that. Okay. All right, yes.
One other, one other projection would be, at that station, it had been determined that we were going to have a sister, and as we do at the south station, to collect storm water and to use that for washing the fire engines. That's proved very successful at the south station. So, so added to that would be, I can't, I think the number was about sixty thousand dollars out of the storm water for, or whatever it was.
Oh, okay.
But, but the other question, I would, I would suggest that Mr. Wood come back with a timetable, because I know there's discussions been going on, getting permits to move dirt around, and so we should have some sort of timetable in addition to the funding. And I don't think that's.
Any other discussion? If not, those who favor six and five, hang out.
All right.
Those know, I'll maybe vote for motion. Okay, Mr. Hunter, discussion and action on employee pension plan.
Hopefully this will go a little shorter than it did our, at our last meeting. Generally, you have in front of you, a, there's some bullets of what we are, the committee has recommended. First of all, I'd like to, again, thank the committee, which Laurie Waters was a, a big part of that, we thank her. I don't think she's in-house, but Mr. Cummins was very instrumental in helping us there. Nathan, our CFO, did a great job, got really participated, and we spent a lot of time with GM A, who is our present area or present source for our pension, as well as Edward Jones, who also participated in informing us and bringing us a lot of information. Edward Jones is in, in the audience tonight. If we should, if council, if you should have any questions from them. So thanks a lot. It, believe me, folks, there's been an awful lot of time spent on this, a lot of work. I had little to do with it, that some of the other people gathered all the information and they did the work. But anyhow, I wanted to start off with one thing that many of the city employees presently are always concerned about whenever you're talking about pensions and retirements and health insurance and those type of issues that affect them and their families. I will state this very clearly and I hope it gets out loud and clear. There will be no changes to the people who are employed with the city of Canton in their pension plan. From this point forward, they are going to be the same as they have always had and enjoy. It's a very, very good program, so I need to let you know that. This plan, it will be effective, we're going, we want to make it effective May one, and it's a two-part plan. The idea behind it, or not the idea, but one of the goals behind it was to be able to reduce the percentage that we pay in, percentage of payroll that we pay into as premiums for this. And this, we will accomplish. It will help us to continue to be funded for our retirement programs for now and for the distant futures. It will improve every year our stability here with the city government. To give you a little bit amendment, I'm going to just read this to you if you don't mind. Amendment, in current defined benefit retirement plan for the following changes to apply to all employees who are newly hired or on or after May thirteenth, May year two thousand thirteen. So this will be the new employees, so that we have no new employees right now after, starting in May first. We may, but right now we don't. The benefit formula will go to one-point-two-five versus today it's two-point-five. For all years qualified employment with the city, if that total amount of qualified employment equals ten years or less. After ten years, a benefit formula of two-point-zero for all years qualified employment with the city, if that total amount of qualified employment exceeds ten years. So to be, to start off with, the first ten years are one-point-two-five. After ten years, we, they get a jump, it goes to two, which will be a better program for them. A five-year vested schedule, which is, which is better. Now here's the, um, here's the second part that's, that will be new for new employees, not for existing employees. We got to make that very clear, the difference. This is established in a defined contribution versus the previous one I just mentioned is a defined benefit. Defined benefit, the city can, uh, funds it all. Defined contribution is going to be in addition to the defined benefit. It establishes defined benefit of a four-fifty-seven B plan for new entrants hired on or after May first, year thirteen. It is funded by a two percent employee contribution. What this is doing now, for the younger people that you come, come aboard or new hires, it, it starts to build a three-legged stool, social security, a pension plan, which is the defined benefit. And now, and today, we're all faced that we ought, need to contribute to our retirement ourselves. So this is where the two percent comes in, that the employees will contribute two percent and then the city will match that two percent. So there is free money for them. They has an immediate vesting period, so that money becomes theirs immediately. If they choose to leave after a year or two years or whatever, that money goes with them. Under defined benefit, they don't get to take it. I'm recommending that this be administered, as I mentioned in the last meeting, of the defined contribution portion only. Defined contribution portion only. Edward Jones, and the reason for this is that this third leg to the stool needs the family of the employees or the employee themselves to sit down and decide what's best for them and, and their families. Everybody is different. They have a different degree of risk, they have different needs, so they're not going to be the same. Edward Jones are professional, one of the top-notch professional groups in this country to give that advice. It doesn't cost them to go and see Edward Jones. Their counselors, they can take very complicated programs and make it very simple. They have that ability. I think there's eight agents in the Cherokee County area as well as surrounding areas. Now go back just a minute, on that two percent, the contribution that the city puts in there, at a later date, if council decides that they want to make it a little sweeter, they have the ability at any time to increase that to a number that they're comfortable with. And that, where we have to come to pass, we're just getting started with this. I would like, glad to report that because of the stock market in the past few months, that we have already improved our financial position as far as funding it, it's about two million dollars that would be categorized as unfunded for our retirement plan. Don't get alarmed, that's not a lot. And that's a lot of money, but it's not a lot in, in grand scope of things. But we've already gone from seventy-two percent funding to seventy-four percent funding. And once we get into the eighties, which could be two to three years, we're in excellent shape. We're not in bad shape now. I want that to be very clear. I will say this, Edward Jones will work with any city employee that cares to go in and discuss their plans or their needs or just to go in. or their needs, or just to go in to get information, what maybe they should consider or not consider. It is a free service, that all you do is call and make an appointment, and you, they will gladly buy you a cup of coffee and sit down in their office and talk to them. And it's no charge to our city employees. This is different than what our, the other organization that we were looking for, for this service. GMA, who's been very good for us, very good. And they will carry the bulk of, of the plan, and that's the defined benefit. We will remain with them. We're not making a change. Only defined contribution, which is new and will be for new employees. It will not affect present employees. Yes?
Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to make the motion, Susan, extract those points out, and that we adopt Mr. Huffman's plan, going with the DB, defined benefit plan with GMA, and the defined contribution plan with Edward Jones.
Have a motion and a second.
You said strike out?
No.
Sorry, what'd you say?
To pull out the specifics, to pull out the specifics out of what Mr. Huffman said and include them in my motion. Like he's, yeah, which is basically this.
Okay. Make this your motion.
Okay, so move to the contents of this.
Yes, ask for motion.
That's, have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Murray. Well, one question, and I, I don't know how it works, but is the entry and exit from the defined contribution plan, is, should there be a timing? Or would employees be allowed to go in and out as they so choose? I think we probably should discuss that with Edward Jones and personnel to establish or include dates or timeframes when they would be able to go in if they, for example, they're in six months and then they say, oh, I don't want to do it anymore. We don't want them coming back necessarily a month later or two weeks later saying, well, I changed my line, I don't want to go back in again.
Mr. Mayor, could we ask Representative Edgell to address that? Mr. Councilperson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Council. That'll be established at the time the risk document is drawn up for the plan, as far as the in and out. And all the details will be drawn up and specified in the book.
So that's not an Edward Jones decision, that would be the principal's decision.
Well, that'd be, you know, you make the decision with the city. You can only change it, you can only change it every six months, or you're... And you get that for a year, so it's what you decide.
Any other questions, please?
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, we've got a motion and a second. If they have any other questions. If not, those in favor, six or five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voted no. On the next item, discussion of Cherokee County Board of Commissioners Chairman Aaron's economic growth proposal. As most, most of you know, Chairman Aaron's had, has made a proposal to the city to expand the Office of Economic Development and has asked each city to contribute a certain amount. And as I understand it, the county would be matching those dollars. Did you have a question? Motion, okay. I, I feel that we need to, to give an answer to them, which has been going on for a while, yes or no. And, and I think that it could be contingent on a number of things. For instance, it could be that, you know, it would be contingent on it being for the 2014 budget year, not immediately. What else were some of the other contingents that we had talked about?
This question goes to the city.
Yeah, and that would be based on the participation of all the other cities as well. And anything else? Yes?
Is it more a defined number of years?
I think they were trying to do three years, but, and, you know.
Revisit this every, every three years.
You decided that, yeah, actually, it would be revisited every three years if we go over the requests.
And our contribution...
Around 20 or 25 is what they were asking.
25. Can we make a commitment for the second year?
No, that's much. Well, we can, with an intergovernmental agreement, we can do that, yeah. We couldn't if it was private entity, but we can as a intergovernmental agreement.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the inclusion in the fiscal year 2014, 15 and 16 budgets, $25,000 to support the request for Canton participation, as long as other, a majority of other cities requested also participate in, in the expansion of the economic development program in Cherokee County.
Yeah, have a motion and a second. Couple of questions. Is that effective immediately or...
2014 budget year.
Budget year.
Yeah.
Fiscal year 2014, 15.
Beginning budget year is what that would be.
Okay.
Well, I say for you, do we have a second? You have a second, aye now.
I'd like to just ask you, I, I am in favor of this proposal. I, I think we need to show the county our support for county-wide economic development. I, I think it's mutually beneficial. The motion as it stated, can it, does it include or can it be modified to, to make certain that the agreement that we have with the county, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed with the city manager and the city attorney, that, that everything's done that will protect our interests?
Mr. Mayor? The only motion I'm making is that it's our intent to include in the budget this $25,000. As you know, we have to go through the budgeting process, and we have to approve the budget. So therefore, should we feel at that particular point in time, the conditions that we would want to have been met by the county to have us contribute this $25,000, if they haven't been met or we're not happy with it, we can also not approve it in the budget at that point in time. All I'm doing is, is putting out an intent to the county that we intend to do this, should they follow through and meet the objectives that we feel are to the benefit of the city of Canton.
I'll see. Jack, did you have one?
I think my...
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, unlike Mr. Bryan, I'm opposed to this only for one reason, not to show any disrespect to the county or anything else, but at the last meeting, my understanding that council approved the establishment of our own economic development department and had two job descriptions. I think we should channel all of our assets, which aren't that plentiful, in that direction before we start ceding any other funds or authority to the council, I mean, to the county. And the county's already providing that service to us through Missy Martin. And I just feel that we should fund our own first and see where that goes before we make any county-wide commitments.
I, I would agree with Mr. Rush, that Canton as well as Mr. Cummings. How about that? And I just think that during our budgeting, we address our only issues first. If we have money left over, if we can, we can, but we come first.
I, it was my understanding, we were actually, isn't there a budget amendment in this?
No, it's an intent to tell the county.
There's a budget amendment in, in tonight's meeting that would address the economic development thing, which all would, would get it started long before this one ever got started. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I just think it's fair that Buzz understands that we do have some priorities. That we want to support it, we do want to support it, and I do too. I hope we can find that money, even more money.
Let me ask you a question. Who around this audience knows what that $25,000 would be spent for?
Mr. City? I was told by the commission chairman that it would be to hire another person in their economic development office. That that would be out there doing, will be helping Missy Martin do economic development work. But that, again, we're just telling them our intent right now. We've got until, August, we start the budget August to get all that clarified. That's correct. That's, that's what I was told, is they would, would, would hire professionals.
Advertising conferences or special.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The numbers have been bandied about 20,000 or 25,000. We'd like to have a firm number.
It's 25.
It's 25.
Okay.
Okay. Second point. When that was counted, that came up, is what is this money going to be utilized for? It was my understanding from the meeting that we had with Missy, that the funds would also support advertising, circulation, getting out. It was not necessarily totally to hire another person, but some of it would be utilized that way because it would be an in-house person, it would not be somebody out in the field doing activities. They need a, for the better term, clerk, to take care of a lot of the paperwork that needs to be generated. So we've, we've got some different points here that we've heard. We have not received a very definitive point from the chairman on what these funds will be utilized for. How much the funds are, 25,000 is the number it's been said. And also, at that same meeting, we did ask for a 90-day reprieve to get us into our August budget, which we'd be looking at 2014. So we did ask these, and the urgency of this thing, you know, we can say, yeah, you know, fine. We look at it, but that's, your motion doesn't tie us to anything.
That is correct.
But what we need to have in that motion then is a defined, defined description of what that is for, what money is that's for.
You've got, you've got, you've got to understand, that is certainly not just for one person to work in the office, because we're talking about close to 200 grand. And, I mean, the idea is that they're going to at least hire one more person to help them to continue to do, in my opinion, what they've been doing for the city of Canton and for the town. I mean, whatever that is, I mean, you know, to what degree that is, it would be my understanding that they would just continue to expand their efforts. And if that included marketing, if that included, you know, travel, going to visit these businesses and industries that need to come back, so be it.
You put out a figure, I've not heard, a total of 200 grand. Buzz told me that it was going to be determined on the size of the city, so the smaller...
Right, right, but they're matching the money, keep in mind that the county's...
So I wasn't aware it was that much, so, yeah, you're right. They'll do a lot more than just hiring one person.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's all, you get 25 from Canton, 20 from Woodside, there's 50 plus whatever it was from the other cities. There, you know it's going to be probably 60 or 70, and they're going to match that, so it's going to be 100 some thousand anyway.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I think we just learned something in our recent referendum, that we don't have all the numbers. What, how are we going to spend that money? Or they going to spend that money? Isn't it, don't you think it's appropriate that we go back to the commissioner and ask her a little bit more in detail about how, because when I, I, I placed a question to Ms. Martin, when she came over and very courteously met with us, gave us a lot of good information, and she had some good facts about what she has done. But when I ask, how are you going to spend it? Well, you know, we've been sharing work around here, I got wandering generalities. Wandering generalities in that, in this type of business. And we heard from our audience today that that's not the way they want to see our government run.
Mr. Mayor, yes, all this motion is, is an intent to support by $25,000 the economic development request of the county. And we are basing it upon receiving sufficient information to substantiate the budgeting of that money during our budgeting process. If we feel at the time we budget that the county has not provided us with a good, clear and decisive way that they are going to use that money, we have the ability to not budget for it. And therefore, all we're saying is, we support the program.
You didn't say that when you made your first statement.
Yeah, to include it in the budget.
Now, the point I'm trying to...
Hold on, hold on. Are you sure?
Yeah. The point, I'm sorry. The point I'm trying to make, and I agree with you, Mr. Cummings, that the intent, but we put certain things like the other cities are going to participate in one, that the county was going to match. But you just added another, which I totally agree with. How is it going to be spent? So that should go back, yeah. Okay, I'm just, I'm doing like what sometimes you're so capable of doing, is adding some little innuendos back in there.
Okay, we have, I'm sorry.
Could you ask the clerk to read the motion, please?
May a motion to approve for the year 2014, 15 and 16, $25,000 to Cherokee County, as long as the majority of the other cities also participate in the expense of the economic program in Cherokee County. That was seconded. And I'm not sure if everything else is...
Are you, are you amending your motion in any way? Okay.
I, we, you know, we have an out in the budgeting process.
Well, you got the budget coming up, absolutely.
Go ahead and put it in, Mr. Cummings, what, what you want.
What I'm trying to accomplish is very simple, is to show, no, show support of the county's economic development program that has done significant economic development in this city. And at the budgeting time, they have asked for $25,000, and I'm showing the intent of trying to include that in our budget.
Mr. Rush?
The only question I would have is, the way the motion was read, it didn't say intent, it didn't say maybe, it said include. And if it says include, I can't support it.
Correct.
All right, I'll change the motion that we approve the intent to include.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just want to throw in one thing. I've heard this thing, how the group has been able to bring into this city millions of dollars. Included in that was the expansion of the hospital, which was already planned. Included in that was the, the universal alloy expansion already planned. So what we're, what we have, these big million-dollar numbers, it's not the real numbers, if we want to really get down to it. But it was there. So I just want to point out, those million dollars were already accounted for without any extra work on anybody's part.
But their efforts for sure are based on that, regardless of where they came from or what they included, considerably more than any other city apparently.
Well, so was our efforts to maintain.
What she showed us included the whole county versus the city. That's right, so that would have included, it was not...
Over 50%.
That's what it said, that's what she said.
Well.
I'm glad to ask that question.
Well, you take the hospital and look at the millions that's going to be spent there.
Well, I don't know, I don't, I wonder that.
Just going back to what I, what I stated earlier, to prove the intent to include is still the same as inclusion. If we would change the motion that we will consider including it in the budget, that would be something different. I could support that. I can't support anything that's in the total affirmative.
I think it's important that this be unanimous vote, which you...
Change the word, that we all support the consideration of...
Whatever it was, they get something for medicine.
You go ahead and the other part. Okay. At which, I hope this means at least that we will, we will give it a serious consideration at budget time when it comes up. It will, it will be an item I hope you will put in the budget for us to strike out or leave in.
It'll be there.
Okay. Any other discussion, maybe not. Those in favor signify and saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion, thank you. Update on Heritage Park master plan?
Well, I think this was only your agenda the last meeting, I was not there. But we do have a proposal from AMEC to conduct the development master plan for Heritage Park in the contract amount of forty-nine hundred dollars. And that's my, that's my update.
I hope that we will, we will consider approving that. We have approved that one. Well, we need, my feeling is, we need to go ahead and move forward with that. That is a very small amount of money in order for them to tell us how we can maximize the utilization of Heritage Park. There's an awful lot of land there and not much there, but, you know, with the walking back.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There is an awful lot of land, we all know that. But there's an awful lot of options that could be considered. And I don't want to leave any of those options off. She, they are just going to look at the geographical part and say, "You can put playground here" or something like that, just like that. But to expand this thing, sitting on top of the hill is a big building that we own called One MCA that would be very interested in taking over as being a recreational department for the city. And I've already asked them to start putting some, I see.
I roll my eyes at that one.
But they have the expertise to do that where we wouldn't, we would not be able to do it the way they do it. Now, they would not run the, say, the soccer field. They would coordinate with an organization or, for lack of words, like a deputy soccer association. They would coordinate to make sure that the time was divided up amongst team sports versus the public to make sure that that is not abused or overtaken over by any one group. And they have the expertise to do that, we don't. Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, we are underway in building the Etowah River Park. And that is moving along at a very good pace, things are looking good out there. And then also, under new business nine C, we have another issue coming up. I would like to hold off any action on Heritage until we get some of these others either signed off on, approved, or down the road. Then we come back. I don't see the urgency of spending, what'd you say, the forty-nine hundred? To do the study. Let's, let's get this done. We got it on our plate. Then let's move to the Heritage. And by that time, we will have the Etowah finished. And we will have a good composite of the two parks, possibly the three parks and a trail that will give this study group a little bit of better understanding of what our whole system is of parks versus doing the study now. We don't even have these other parks completed yet.
No, we know what's going in, most of them, don't we? And, and the idea was not to begin any facility improvement immediately, but to, but to lay out the plan and, because that's going to take a while. Like Mr. Huffman said, there's other parties that are interested in knowing what may go in or what should go in, you know? And I think that's what, what this group would need to do, is to maximize the use of it. What can you do, what does that people want in that park? And it's just, it's just a plan that will come out on a piece of paper. And hopefully, they will, you know, discuss this with organizations like the Y, members of the general public, and the agencies that have an interest in it. But, you know, I just think it's, it's something that we talked about some long time ago, as you know. And Mr. Rush indicated that we should wait until we knew what was going in the Etowah River Park before we did this. And so, we now know. And that's, I think, I think it's something we ought to do, but that's your decision.
So moved.
Is there a motion?
There is now.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. What's the motion?
Do the forty-nine hundred dollar study.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any other questions to talk?
As long as they understand that all the, all that gets under six and eight feet of water.
Oh, yeah. They're the ones that actually designed that, what's there now, of just the same group.
Oh, that's the reason for. Yeah, you're right.
It's long before they can, I'll tell you that. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Not, those in favor signify and saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion, thank you. Okay. Action on the planning commission's recommendation for KC, ZCA thirteen oh one dash zero zero one KTV properties located at four ninety-one and one ninety-three Hospital Road. City manager, we did talk about that at the last meeting, I believe, in a good bit of detail. So, you laid, not been here at that.
Mayor, I remember those properties when I had taken the police training course and I rode with patrolmen who went to that place when it was abandoned and messed up and pretty ugly and dangerous. In fact, one was on the second floor, one policeman was on the second floor, another was on the first floor with me, and they were a little bit nervous about what was going on. So, when I went in there a couple of weeks ago and saw what it looks like now, I'm, I'm all for it.
Basically, it's a very minor change, anyway. Gate, in a second. We have, we have a motion on it?
Yes.
We have a motion in a second. All right. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify and saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Okay, new business.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. A H, I have budget amendment economics development.
Which one did I leave there? Oh, yeah, oh, okay. Action on budget amendment for funding of city economic development. I believe this was also discussed at the last meeting. But you have questions?
Yeah, I have a couple, of course, that's.
Is there a motion? Yeah, let's go ahead. Do we have, do we have a motion to approve that? It's a budget amendments for that. We have a motion, we have a second.
Have a second?
Have a second?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, a motion in a second, okay.
I'm sorry.
Now we can discuss, Mr. Cummings.
Looking at the numbers, I, what I'd like to know, if city manager could tell me, what is the annual expected budget for fiscal year two thousand fourteen? And how much more than what we would have spent in fiscal two thousand thirteen had no change occurred in the mayoral staff or resignation of Main Street director?
Mr. Cummings, I think we sent these agendas out weeks ago. And so, I did not anticipate that question. Had somebody given me some advance notice and expectation to anticipate, we would have had that information. I believe it was provided in a letter from Mr. Ingram at the last meeting, at which none of us were in attendance. But anytime y'all can give me a heads up, I want to provide you all the information that we can. But there's no way I can always anticipate it. Nathan, do you have the answer to his question from your previous letter?
I can make some adjustments, sir.
That's close enough. I believe that was sent out with the last agenda packet, though, Mr. Cummings.
Well, I had this, but this only shows the current amended budget.
Right. But I think he also included a letter.
I believe that's correct. I didn't, I may have not seen it.
Mayor, councilor, if you'll let me make a statement and see if I answered your questions. I'm not exactly sure. The expected annual budget for the new department is going to be approximately hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Okay, hundred ninety, thank you. And what did we, what did we save or what is in addition?
For the remainder of fiscal year thirteen, it'll be five months. So, there'll be five twelfths of the one ninety, which is eighty thousand dollars. That's what we need for the rest of fiscal year thirteen to cover this economic development.
In terms of new, new dollars for next fiscal year, what would we need over and above the dollars that we've appropriated for this?
That's what I was thinking. Your question was, is how much is a hundred ninety thousand greater than the current Main Street program that was currently vacated and proportioned by mayor? The budget, if you look at the budget amendment sheet that you have, budget amendment number eight?
Right.
See the original annual budget there for the very first section, starting with forty-one thousand two hundred?
Yeah, that totals seventy-five two ninety-seven.
That's what Main Street is for. That's, that's the, the annual budget for Main Street, that function. Okay. That's seventy-five thousand, or thereabout. The, this is where the guess would come in. The salary portion of the mayor's budget was there about fifty, it was actually greater than that. It benefited, benefits was about sixty thousand, fifty, sixty thousand dollars?
A hundred thirty-five, so we're adding.
So, we're adding about fifty.
We're adding about fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars. Thank you, that's all I had to.
And we have a motion on, on, a motion in a second to approve the budget amendments for the economic, economic development. Any, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify and saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion, thank you. All right, new business, item A. Action on award of Marietta Street Road streetscape materials testing and construction oversight contract to Arcadis Construction Administration Services, and the authorities signed the contract. City manager?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
I'd like to.
Well, we need, I guess we'd need a, a motion on that?
So moved.
No, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make the motion that we put this out to bid. Even though it is a personal services quote contract, it's a total of about a hundred and thirty-six thousand or so. I'd like to make the motion to put it out to bid.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
May I? May I ask our city engineer to come up and explain the thought process behind recommending this particular firm to have a construction administration services and, and management as opposed to having bid it out to someone else to take on, on that responsibility?
Before he does, I'd bring out some points, and then he can respond.
Go ahead.
One time? The management of a project by a third-party firm, the industry standard is two to four percent of project value. And that two to four percent is dependent upon the size of the project. The smaller the project, the higher the percentage. Using the project that they're going to be managing, it's one million seven hundred and seventy-three thousand five thirty-nine that we've approved. They're asking for one thirty-six seven ninety-four for management oversight. That is seven point seven percent of project value, which is way outside the normal range. They estimate eleven hundred and seventeen hours. If you compute that eleven hundred and seventeen hours, that's a hundred and twenty-two dollars an hour, which is extremely high for managing a project. Four percent, using the higher range, since this is not a multi-million dollar project, it's just under two million. Four percent equals seventy thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars, or sixty-three fifty-one an hour on the estimated hours. That is, in my opinion, more in line with industry standards. I think we need to go outside, when we're spending a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars almost, and look and see if there aren't other project management companies that will provide it within the industry standard. And the industry standard is obtained from a project manager that has twenty years of experience managing construction projects.
Jovi?
That, that range has been compared with that of, say, in Atkins, who had designed the Olestra and Hickory Flat project. We would compare, it's typical, they have designed the projects intimately familiar with all the properties, the property owners, the process of being drive-away and acquisitions throughout that project. So, we feel they have the knowledge and the details of the project building as, as designed, gives us the best product.
Yeah. Jovi, now, I'm putting you a little bit on the spot. Now, I don't ever like to be put on the spot, so I apologize for that. But do you happen to recall the contract numbers for the work itself and then for construction oversight for Olestra and/or for Hickory Flat? And how they might prepare for this? And again, I apologize for asking you that one out prior.
I can, I can get those for you.
I just didn't know if you remembered and could, could relate them to this project or not.
Olestra, I think it was about a one, it's one million five, say, one and a half million. The construction oversight funds is in the one twenty range, if I'm, if I remember correctly.
So, the proportions would be pretty similar then?
Yes.
I, I guess my question about the, I don't recall going back on the Olestra Street and doing this. Was this not, this having apparently not been in their original contract? And then we come back now and do a contract directly with them, there's not a lot to keep people honest in that respect. I mean, you know, they might want to give you a little bit higher percentage knowing that they got the inside if you're just going to get to them. And whereas if, you know, if you bid it out or take proposals or something like that, you know whether or not that price is really where it ought to be or not. But, but, Mr. Cummings?
Mr. Mayor, if the design has been properly done, a competent project manager can pick it up and run with it. Or a project engineering company, if you got, we actually have two parts in here, project engineer and a project manager. It just seems that a hundred and twenty-two dollars an hour is an exorbitantly high figure for the amount of work that's being given to us based on industry standard.
Yes, a question, Jovi. Is there anything particular important about this project that would require specialty that where they should get a premium for their oversight?
You, this is going to include some, they'll take test cylinders and they'll, they'll have some special tests, just test for strength. That sort of stuff for concrete, for all the materials. And I believe it includes some geotechnical, geotechnical testing, but just making sure we have the right, some grade.
Is that, is that you generally done? Is this over and above, is generally done?
No, that's it.
Jovi, Mr. Huffman used the term that they would give it a premium, but based on what you said on Olestra Road project, it's not really a premium. It seems to be the standard around here.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, this, this kind of bothers me a little bit. What, what is a hundred fifty thousand dollars per something?
A hundred and thirty-seven almost.
Hundred thirty-seven, not to be bid out. The, that seven point seven percent number versus two to four percent, is that, what's your comment on that?
I'm not sure where he's getting the two to four percent number, where, where was that? I, well, we've compared it to the past projects. It's more modern nature.
That came from a construction project manager with twenty years' experience based on just managing the oversight of a project. And it's two, the current rate is two to four percent. It used to be around six.
Would that include materials testing and the expenses of, of geotechnical?
It may and may not, I'm not sure.
We can, we can definitely.
But again, I think that we should define it and, and put it out to see if there isn't savings here. I mean, we were worried a few minutes ago about forty-nine hundred dollars for, to review the park. And we're just going to both spend a hundred and thirty-seven thousand without getting a second opinion or a second viewpoint.
How much would that close up? That was going to be my question to that. Is it, is there a time frame we're working against? I know we have a matching grant. And also, what's the cost of roughly to put it out to bid? It'd be costly. put it out for bid, it would be costly there too. Or if we put it out for a bid, if we're gonna delay the project, then we're losing our grants.
I mean, this, this is the Marietta Road Streetscape, when, I mean, when do that, when do they start this work?
Well, since you have approved the award of the low bidder, we will be getting a, a letter to GDOT on our city letterhead that says, yes, the council's approved the award of this, of this little low bidder, they'll be getting our contracts back, and we need to get a sign to go in as soon as possible.
So, and then, then either we or DOT would give them the, proceed to work order.
Proceed to work order?
Proceed to work order.
Oh yeah, they would give us a notice to proceed, and we would, you know, both, they'd mutually execute the contract.
So are we talking about two weeks, three weeks, thirty days?
Yeah.
Probably better for the contract.
I'd say less than thirty days, depending on the GDOTs.
It's usually two to three weeks.
Okay, now, when you get the contracts back, is it the city that gives the notice to proceed, or is it the DOT?
I, I think DOT does, but it's, but now it happens pretty quickly, that's not a significant amount of time.
It's not.
Just moving. I apologize for vacating premises for a few minutes.
We understand.
My question is, the one, a hundred and thirty-six thou, one thirty-seven? The state pays eighty percent, we pay twenty of this number? Have we ever changed to one thirty-seven? Is that correct?
That is not correct in this, in this situation, because it's a different type of funding from, say, the Waleska and the Hickory Flat. The way that, the way those were, were put together and presented to GDOT was Atkins had included the cost of the, of the bid and the language in there, plus the construction administration services. So there, when they, and that became lower than, it came in low enough that that covered, it didn't exceed the, the total grant funding amount that they had set out in the beginning. So that one, those are covered eighty percent match on the construction administration part. There, then that goes back to the mayor's question, that he didn't remember doing this particular exercise on those two projects. They didn't have to, they're already, they're already in there.
They were already included in the other?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Just one more. Joe, you don't consider this an extraordinarily high bid? In your opinion, this is average to what we've experienced in the past?
Be honest with you, we compared it to the other two projects, it was fairly close. That is a high hourly rate.
But, but this projected standard that Mr. Cummins said it might be, based on old information, might be on the dissimilar project?
I, I think I could get you some more information, I could get some information from other Streetscape projects that are similar in size and nature, we'd go from there.
But, but you, basically you made your judgment that this was an acceptable price for the work involved?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, actually, they came in higher, and we, we knocked out some hours from the principal engineer on the project. It wasn't much more.
One last question, Joe, if the project gets long, if it comes to completion, do they get over, get paid for overage on the hours, or is that a flat rate?
That, it's a flat rate based on an estimated number of trips for the principal, her wig, and how many hours she's been on the job.
The proposal says it, it's not to exceed fifteen months, so if it went past fifteen months, they would come back for it.
Yeah. That's fine.
Another question, I apologize for dragging this out, but I need to understand, is, is there a downside to the city for us, delaying this, the time it'll take to put together an RFP and looking at it? Is, is there a downside to the city? And then number two, I still don't understand, the one thirty-seven, are we paying all of that, or are we paying just twenty percent of that?
The way I understand it, it doesn't qualify under this particular type of...
So we're paying all of the one thirty-seven? So my second question is, is there a downside for us to, to just say, well, wait a minute, let's get bids on it?
Timing and way, and we have put it out to bid, and we want to get these contractors going as soon as possible, since his, since his bid is, you know, we've already accepted it.
This project can't have been approved, what can it?
It's been approved ten years.
So that's how the week turns? Was it really a downside? Sound like fire station to me. I mean, for the city, I mean, the, kind of, I'm, I'm taking it to answer the question, just know, it's not, it's, it's not going to hurt us, it's not going to cost us any money.
I'd like to delay any further about it.
Could not, not a construction company get on site and, and start tearing up the sidewalks or whatever needs to be done, in the, people going to oversee it, could come in a week later? I mean, the, the first couple of weeks...
Some, some of the duties are pre-construction.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have one, one very strong argument against going out for bid, because we, in my experience in business, we have a, a customer, a vendor here who has now given us their price, and it's public record. Now, if we go out for bid, we're going to force that customer to, I don't know if he's going to bid the same way or do something, but I, in my opinion, when you start putting out your price, and then your customer goes out and tells the world about it, it's just poor business. And I've said this before at, at another council meeting a couple of years ago, and we should have made this decision to go out for bids before we got their price.
I don't think we knew that, though. I don't think we had, you know that. What, what would the, what would be wrong with not going out for public bids on it, but asking, well, I guess they already know the one thirty-seven, so?
Call a question.
Okay, we, we have a motion and a second?
A motion, it is.
The motion is to put this out to bid.
Yes.
Okay.
I have another recor...
We don't really need a formal bid process.
An RFP.
Because we don't want to be required to set the low bidder on something like this.
No.
Because we need to make sure they're qualified and all those.
We should look at others and get, get a, other proposals, and then decide who's going to do it.
Well, the management wouldn't be.
Management would not.
But, but, so I think we'd be, but even if it was, you'd be doing RFP process as opposed to a bid, and that's a legal significance, that's...
So that's what you're asking? RFP, I just want to get other price quotes, because I think it's...
Quote, be a quote rather than bids.
Quotes is fine. All right, we have a motion and a second. Those are the papers signified, saying aye?
Aye.
Pros, no?
No.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
No. Yes. No?
Yes. I'll get the vote.
Oh.
So let me be sure I understand, y'all want us to call up two or three firms and say, will you do this for less than a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars?
We can just do this.
They, they're going...
Well, that's crazy.
I mean, you should...
We're not obligated to take the lowest, so they'll come back with the price.
I'm sure they will.
I didn't ask them a percentage of construction.
I wouldn't get, if I was a business person and you did that to me once, you'd never see me again.
Then we should never have presented this without having done it first.
Well, you say we didn't know, we should have known.
Okay, let's, let's move on. We're moving on here. It's got to be getting late.
A little.
Bad place, yeah. Okay. Item B, Discussion of Possible Action on the Mulkey Change Order for Smithwick Creek Monitoring.
This involves a change order for some monitoring, it's on Smithwick Creek, that would cost us about, cost the city about a thousand dollars a year, on, on a five-year contract.
That motion that was in your package, I'm assuming they're doing the monitoring anyway, and it's just a change order to expand their monitoring?
If we get a motion on that, isn't that something that the city management's making?
No, no, the contract.
Thank you.
We have a motion, do you?
Motion to approve.
Have a second. Any other discussion? If not, those are the papers signified saying aye?
Aye.
Pros, no?
Thank you.
Item C, Action on Resolution on Edouard River Trail Plans, Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The resolution, so staved in your packet, hopefully everybody took time to read it, is pertaining to the trail from Heritage to Bowden Park, and what we would, this resolution is for the council to approve the plans and design to begin a project, including the acquisition of easements right away needed to build the trail. This has been bandied about for ten to twelve years, it has come before us. Anybody that's lived in this city for any length of time, six months or more, should be aware of this trail and the proposed trail. We do have, I mentioned, a, a time constraint here, because we did have a bid, a low bid, from the group that's building the Edouard River Park, and they said they would honor that alternate bid for the trail as long as they're on the project. So that's the reason, and what we're trying to do is move ahead. I don't think anybody would say, we don't want the trail, and what we need to do is find out what the funding is for it.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Cummins?
From what I understand, we have a possible hundred thousand dollar grant from the National Recreational Trails Program that requires us to do certain things. My suggestion is, before we even begin doing this, that we look at that grant and complete those, because that's a hundred thousand dollars towards the cost of those trails. I'd also like to see an area overview schedule where these trails, I don't know if there's an area or not.
You go.
Super. And we are estimating the acquisition costs, and the communications from Mr. Dyer, he said he was going to get appraisals before we proceeded. Have we got appraisals?
I may have started this, I don't want to start at all until y'all voted to do that plan, and that is really the intent of this.
Okay, so you...
We can't even do anything until you have committed to do this plan, because we've approached these people three times over the last six or seven years, and I don't want to approach anybody until y'all have committed to build this trail.
I'm just trying to get the reliability of the estimate.
Are you saying that...
That was actually, the hundred thousand I heard from somebody else had done that, but I think that's a very conservative.
Are you saying that this plan is laid out there where it's going to be, and if we approve that, that's what we're doing? And I'll be honest with you, I couldn't tell anything about those plans. It didn't have acreage on there, it didn't have anything I could really tell very much about.
Well, and we need to ask, so, and it's okay, if you decide not to do it, that's fine, I just, people are telling me to do things, but I don't want to do it until the council's approved it.
My last question is, where's the money coming from?
Four million dollars in spots, I think.
Four million dollars in spots.
And all coming due within this country? I mean, we will receive the money to pay for this out of spots?
Well, there's no guarantee what you're going to collect from the spot, but we're meeting collection schemes currently.
And your estimate is that we will have enough to pay for this out of spots?
Yes.
But all you're asking, all you're asking, be, be asking for us to prove tonight is the layout of the trail?
Right, there's still...
Not needed construction or anything like that?
It's kind of like the same, well, I like the same motion on the intent to fund the development of the...
This is an intent to follow that pathway.
So, but, but, because what needs to happen is, the, the, the plans need to, I can't do easements without another plan. We have a site plan, but we don't have construction drawings. But we go in and get appraisals, so we know how much the land will be worth, or at least from our position, how much it is worth.
We've made three good phases at these individual property owners, and did absolutely nothing over these past years. I understand what Mr. Dyer is asking for, is don't stick him out there again and do nothing. This council needs to make a decision.
Well, what you're saying is, this actually includes the expenditure, the resolution says including the acquisition, so you are asking who's expend money.
Right, yes, to acquire the easements, because you'd have to do that to start.
Okay, now, are we, are we going to acquire those easements even if the, the appraisal is considerably lower than what, what the, what the owners may want to sell for?
Yeah.
Or, in other words, by doing the appraisals, are we saying that we will condemn those if necessary, no more than the appraisal value?
And that's the decision that I think you need to make, whether you make it tonight or later on, doesn't matter to me, and so maybe you just say, authorize us to go ahead and get the appraisals, period, spend the money on the appraisals, and then come back and decide whether you want to go forward or not. But at some point, you need to decide, you're going to go forward and condemn if you have to. That decision has to be made.
It's a step process.
I mean, is, is this a resolution, what you need to start real negotiations with the landowners to...
Well, that's what the intent of, but again, if you want to do the appraisals first before and then come back and decide, that's fine too, but at some point, decisions have to start being made, and that was what I was trying to do.
Let's move forward with this.
Thank you.
Talking about kicking a can down the road, this has been kicked a whole bunch. We've had tremendous round meetings on this. That's, you know, guys, make a statement, let's go ahead and do this. We've got a lot of people putting years into this, for ten years, I know, and I know we've already contacted property owners, and they're getting tired of seeing us, and not doing anything to it. Make a decision, let's do it.
Call a question.
I want to ask Bob one other question here. You can, you can take that set of plans, and you can negotiate from that set of plans?
There has to be another drawing with the acreage and the boundary, and, and, but, again, if you approve that layout, there is a site plan. There's a site plan that shows where it's going to be located on the property, so there's enough to negotiate. At some point, a document's got to be drafted, that has a, meets and bounds description of the easement area that we're acquiring, we don't have that.
So we got to have surveys before we start the negotiations?
I don't know if that has to be surveyed, they may have already surveyed it, because they've got it shown, they've got the area shown. I, I think it's a matter of going and asking HTR, can you go ahead and work out a construction of, not even, it's a rightaway plan is really what we need, with the meets and bounds of this area that you're showing on the plan. They may say, oh, we've got to go survey, I don't know how much work they did to come up with the...
Because they're going to have, they're going to have to define both the permanent easement and any temporary construction easements as well, on that side, on that survey.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be any temporary construction, because those will be outside. All the work will be within an easement, it'll just be an easement.
How wide is that?
Question, I, thank you. Question's called.
The motion was to adopt this resolution.
That's right.
We have a motion, we, we have a second. Any other discussion? If not, those are the papers signified saying aye?
Aye.
Pros, no?
No.
All members voting to motion exception, Mr. Cummins.
Thank you, appreciate it very much.
City Manager, before, you got anything?
I do, have several things, Mr. Mayor. I'm informed that the local Historic Preservation Society is awarding a preservation award to Southeast Cemetery. So Camille Wayes in particular has worked hard on that, and I think she will be attending a banquet tomorrow night, I believe, to anticipate in the presentation of that award. It was alluded to earlier about Cummins, we have received tentative approval, subject to provide some significant additional documentation and information, a hundred thousand dollars on a trails grant from the State Department of Natural Resources. The commendations are due to Ken Patton, who initiated and worked on that, that is not concluded yet. There's some additional information that's got to be presented to the state by, I think it's the fourth or fifth, I believe, of April, and then Ken, but...
April fifth, yes.
Anyway, that, that process is, is underway. We've got a, hopefully a very brief ribbon-cutting ceremony tomorrow at our reservoir on site, that too is a project that's in long time in coming, but Dave and Jimmy, Dave Otabian and others have worked on that, that project, Joe Be West has as well, so despite what may be some marginally inclement weather tomorrow, we certainly encourage city council members and the general public, if you don't know where that is, it's at the intersection... and the general public, if you don't know where that is, it's at the intersection of Baycon and, and Bluff Parkway, so we encourage you, come, it's actually about a block up Bluffs from, from Baycon, but encourage you to participate in that brief ceremony at nine o'clock in the morning. We have submitted our GIFA loan application, I think you're aware of that, and Nathan and Dave Atabian have both been working hard on that, I believe the GIFA board reviews those applications in May, and how long after that it'll take up to get some information, but that's relative to both our wastewater treatment facility upgrades and the Harmon Field lift station upgrades, and also the consolidation of some of our older, higher interest rate loans might be incorporated into that package, we hope. Harmon Field, pumps are, I'm told, will be here by the end of April, those pumps, of course, are made, once those issues are, work issues are ordered on that, but that project is on schedule. The hospital fire station site that we've been talking about on one forty, Mr. Dyer and, and I met today with, Mr. Patton met today with representatives of the hospital, we're continuing to negotiate for the acceptance of that site, as you recall, our project agreement with the hospital, actually going back prior to the hospital, but currently it's been assumed developed, hospital requires that we provide, be provided a three-acre site for construction of a new fire station, and so this is part of that process, we will probably be issuing land disturbance permits next week, and. Do I need to pause for a minute? Yeah.
We're finished, we're almost there.
What, what was I talking about?
You don't know, I certainly don't.
That's apparent, that's apparent. We're soon going to be advertising for the position of economic development coordinator and, and our marketing and special events coordinator, and, well, we are advertising, we're soon going to be interviewing for those. The parking study process is underway, we have not brought you a specific recommendation on that, but we hope to, got a very informal working committee, the mayor, Stan Rogers, representing the DDA and downtown business owners, Judy Reed, who is the chair, new chairman of the school board, has agreed to participate in that, Ken Patton and, and I will, and we'll be bringing recommendation back to city council shortly on that. Let me correct something that, so there's not any misunderstanding about our consolidation proposal and the failure by the county to present a written proposal, I think after the city council voted in June or whenever it was to not authorize the managers of both governments, in this case, the city manager, to, to negotiate and bring back some sort of proposal, I think in defense of the county, I think the county dropped, assumed they didn't need to bring us back anything in writing, and I just don't want the county to be unfairly criticized for any failure to have, have not brought us a written proposal, I think the indication that was sent to them was that we were not interested in any further discussions or negotiations, and so one would expect them not to bring us anything in writing as a result of that. Our budget process is going to begin very soon, it'll be here before we know it, and in particular, we're going to have to go to work within the next few weeks on, on reviewing what our water and sewer rates needs are going to be as we move forward with GIFA loan applications, hopeful we'll get those, those are at enviously low rates right now, but we're going to have to pay that money back, regardless of what the interest rates are, and that's going to require some review, serious review on the park council as to what our water and sewer rates are. So we'll be scheduling that session in the very near future, and finally, on March twenty-eighth, a week from the day, we've got a work session scheduled at three PM to continue review of the unified development that we're here in. Okay, that's all, I have nothing else?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn.